Well, good morning and welcome to the Infrastructure Planning and Assets Committee for today, the 10th of June 2025. I'll begin by recognising that we have in attendance all of the members of the committee, including the Deputy Chair, Paul Tully, Mayor Theresa Harding, Deputy Mayor Nicole Johnick, as well as councillors Augustine, Doyle, Martin and Madden. I'll now deliver the acknowledgement of country. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as the custodians of the land and winds and waters we all share. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging, as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of a proud people. Are there any declarations of interest around the table this morning? I'll move on to business outstanding. We have the matter of, I think that's just on the not-for-mention, that first matter on notice from Infrastructure Planning and Assets Committee. Is there anything further to be addressed this morning on that matter? Not to my knowledge, it's just a notation, is it not?
Oh, I did have a question of the councillor officer. If we're talking about the matters of notice sports fencing?
Sports fencing, yeah.
I do have a question with regard to Ivan Marsden Fields.
Is a relevant officer here this morning? Yes, would you like to ask the question?
Yep, I can just ask a question. With regard to paragraph C, I just wanted to clarify, given that the number one field at Ivan, cricket field at Ivan Marsden, the number one field, the one that we spend so much time doing maintenance on and bringing it up to a certain standard, I wanted to confirm that action had been taken to repair the fence on Old Torma Road to the extent that it would exclude nefarious activities by people driving through and doing damage to the pitch by driving over the pitch. So I wanted to make sure that council had at least put up a temporary fence to stop any vehicles getting off Old Torma Road onto our number one pitch at Ivan Marsden.
Through the chair, if we can come back to you on that. We expect to come back for those three items during this next week, so we'll include that to make sure we've got that addressed.
Come back today?
No, in the next week, we'll come back to you on an answer to the full.
Take that question on notice and we'll receive that advice during the week. Okay, item one, which is response to petition requesting council consider the proposal for a dog park at 25 Mills Street, Goodna. Is there any questions of the officers? There being no questions, the recommendation is noted. Therefore, recommendations. Would someone like to move the recommendations contained in the report? Thank you councillor Johnick. A second up. Thank you councillor Doyle. Any discussion? Yes, Mayor Harding.
Thank you, Chair. To give some background to this petition, Mrs Lauren Alder-Bavank is an active member of the Goodna Neighbourhood Watch, and you could see by the number petition, this is a matter that has been raised within the community. Mrs Alder-Bavank has explained to me that at the time of gathering the signatures for her petition, she was not aware of the limitations of building structures on land acquired through the voluntary home buyback programme, such as the one on Mills Street. Therefore, she is asked whether Warren Park on Alice Street, Goodna, could be considered with the intention of being, finding a suitable location of a dog park closer to the more densely populated parts of Goodna. So I thank council, this council allowing this to happen, but also the council organisation for investigating both locations, both Mills Street and Warren Park, and assessing them against the criteria of desired standards of service, leash-free dog park areas policy. And I note that it's found them both not to be suitable. I find that it's disappointing that we have not been successful in finding another suitable location for a dog park in Goodna, as just currently no off-leash dog park on that southern side of the highway there as well. Look, I note that the closest off-leash dog park is the Lynx Pet Centre, which is only two kilometres away, but it's on the other side of the highway, and that has been the issue that residents have raised with me. I do note that council has followed the policy as set out. Maybe it's something that we could look at as a provisional project in the future, but I do, I do thank council for assistancy against the policy guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, the matter to the vote. All those in favour? Against? That is all in favour with the exception of the mayor, who voted against. There are no, I believe that was all of the councillors accounted for. Item two, response to petition widening northern section of Goddard's Road, Yamanto. Is there any questions of the officers? There's no questions of the officers. The recommendation, three recommendations, there, do I have a mover of the recommendations? Yes, councillor Madden, a second up. Councillor Martin, any discussion?
Yes, Chair.
Thank you councillor Madden.
This Goddard's Road is in division four, and I'd just like to have it on record that I support the petition, and I agree that the northern end of Goddard's Road, which is not wide enough for two lanes, should be widened to allow for two lanes. There are a number of people that live on that section of Goddard's Road, and it's about time that we widen the road. Thanks, thanks Chair.
Thank you. Second, I would like to speak to it.
Sorry, I'd just like to concur with my lone colleague. Thank you.
I do note the recommendation B seeks to have it considered in a future capital works programme. Any writer reply?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry, Mayor. My apologies.
Thank you, Chair. Look, I've had a number of residents approach me about widening Goddard's Road, and it's interesting to see that this section of the road has not meeting modern day standards as, as the mover of this motion has talked about the fact that it's not allowing two-way traffic in the, at the northern ends. I do know it's a costly exercise, so it is a discussion to have at budget time. I also do note that council does use assistance to determine which roads get upgraded in what order based on priority, and we assess on road condition, the traffic volumes and accident data. And I note that in this area, there is not, it's not heavy traffic, but I could also say that it's probably because of the condition of the road as well, and so residents are using other areas. So, look, I think the petition is very much for putting this forward, and I'd hope that it would be part of a budget discussion at our next round. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. Any further discussions? Sorry, I did write a reply to you.
I just wanted to make the point, Chair, that what we might call the northern end of Goddard's Road is only, only has houses on one side of the road, because the land on the other side is a dairy farm that's preserved in the area that can't be built on as a result of Ambley Rathbase. But at the southern end, there's houses on both sides of the road, and there's probably more houses on, on the northern end. There's probably more houses on the northern end than the southern end, given that there's houses on both sides of the road. So I'm surprised that, given time, that council offices weren't of the view that this road should have been upgraded quite some time ago.
Very good. Well, the recommendations does include, as I said before, consideration of the development of future, that it be considered in the development of future capital works programmes. So it is there for consideration in our budget discussions. The recommendations as put. All those in favour? Against? That's unanimous, thank you. I now move to item three. Item three's been on the agenda for some months now, and I moved that item three titled capital investment in provisional projects policy, proposed amendments be lifted from the table. Do I have a second up? Second up councillor Martin. Any questions?
It's listed as an item, is it still, are they still on the table?
They, yes, it should, it should be in the agenda, you're correct.
That's not how it appears.
Yeah, it should still, on the agenda, it should stay that it's still on the table. But it, because it hasn't officially been lifted. So. So in correcting that on the agenda, we still need to move that it be lifted from the table. So that motion is, has still been put and seconded by councillor Martin, if I recollect. Is there any discussion regarding the lifting of the report? There being no discussion, all those in favour? Concur, that's unanimous. I now move, is there any questions in relation to this report before I move to the motion?
Just in relation to how we consider this, the recommendation, the officer's recommendation is probably different from a proposed motion or proposed policy, how are we going to deal with that?
Well, I do have a motion that the revised policy be tabled at the meeting and adopted, subject to the amendments that were circulated yesterday. The proposed amendments that were circulated yesterday.
When you say the revised policy, that's not what appears on the.
No, we set aside, we set aside, we set aside the original policy that was included in the original report, and that we adopt the revised policy. Is that understood around the table?
Or the proposed revised?
With the proposed amendment, yes, correct. Any further discussion or questions I should ask before moving to the motion? No? The motion is that the revised policy titled capital investment in provisional projects as tabled at the meeting be adopted subject to the following amendments, and I'll just read through those amendments, they were circulated yesterday. And I would trust, Vicky, that you have the appropriate wording for that to display, do you? The reason is probably not required. The reason for each one of those is probably not required, that can just be discussed. Well, that's being prepared, just as a question around the table, everyone received those minor amendments, just minor corrections in many respects. Is there any?
Sorry, Chair, can I just, the first one, point six scope, first dot point, remove all the words on behalf of the community, where is?
So in.
I think that's already been removed.
No, no, that's. Yeah, I need to look at the track changed one again. It's been a number of them.
I'm just going on the committee paper that was, that's the formal committee paper?
The formal committee paper, or the one that we circulated about a week ago?
I'm going on what's on the hub of the formal committee, on the official.
That's a much earlier, sorry, Chair, that's a much earlier version, that was the one originally tabled back in last year.
That's the one set aside.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're dealing with the one that was sent on a Friday?
Yeah, well.
Yes, correct.
Mm-hmm.
Circulated to all councillors on Friday.
Yes, it was.
And these amendments are with reference to that.
Let's get this, can I just clarify? We've got the, the proposed draft, and you're moving that that be adopted with these amendments?
So the draft, the, the policy that was circulated, or the draft policy that was circulated Friday the sixth, I believe? Is the policy to be, that's been moved as part of the motion?
Subject to these amendments?
Subject to these minor amendments, yes.
Thank you. Can we just go through it?
Yeah.
Can we just go through each one?
Yeah, because I'm at point six, that's scope, I'm looking at scope, and I can't see where it says on behalf of the community.
I need to go back through my emails as well.
Oh, yes, I can see it, sorry, I can see it.
You have it?
Yep, so it's the very first dot point, a proposal from a councillor slash S, or the mayor on behalf of the community. Okay, thank you. Thank you, okay.
We have that, is that?
Agreed.
And the reason was circulated as well?
Not a problem, thank you. The next one was the third dot point removed, it reads at the word by resolution of council, so that's third dot point.
That's to ensure that that option is not excluded.
Okay, yep.
And then there was just a grammatical suggestion in the.
Okay.
It doesn't read, it's the comma after the words, consideration and approval. Project approval, which is still under scope but on the following page, I believe.
Project approval?
The first paragraph, I believe it is. Just to read that, and I'm reading it, which track changes, so bear with me, the mayor and relevant councillors.
First paragraph, it's the comma after the words, consideration and approval.
So that relevant considerations may be taken into account. Just didn't read right grammatically.
I think it reads fine, but okay, I won't fight it. You're the Chair?
And point nine, monitoring and evaluation, that's just, it just sets the review only at a four-year period, and I've just, we've just suggested or as required.
Can I just double check something with the CEO, Chair? What our policy is, I think, do we have a good governance policy about reviewing policies every four years? Does, or as required, do we have that, is it anywhere else, I'm just looking for consistency?
It's a four-year review cycle, but it is absolutely the case that policies can be reviewed at any time, up to and within that four years. So the four years is really there to provide an outside limit, so we don't have policies that are very out of date and not being reviewed on a contemporary basis. So I'd be very supportive of an as required, and it's something we could consider, or you could consider as a standard in policies, because as we know, things change regularly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
I don't have any issue with the amendments that you've suggested.
Yeah, is there any other questions or anyone, like any other clarification?
Just in relation to that last point from the mayor, could we go right back to the start, like at the date of review, you've got, still got February 2024, right at the start of the document, date of review? Could we just go back to that, please? That would have to be changed. Could I suggest? No, not the first one, the second one, date of review, say, but to make it clear that it can happen before that date, like, to add the, to change that to by 30th of June 2029, which fits in with the four-year period later on.
Sorry, through the chair, that's the date it has been reviewed to create this version. It's not the date of a future review. It's trying to show how current the policy is?
Yeah, but a lot of these, but a lot of the policies we've got like this have got a date which is well into the future.
Okay, I'll check.
That's how, I've seen other policies come up.
Do you want, are you happy to have it adopted subject to that clarification, though?
Yeah, that, like, yeah, a lot of them have got that, but like.
I can't recollect admittedly.
Something, you know, 20th of February 2028.
I've got to, I've got to concur with councillor Tully, our other policies all have date of review being the date of when it's going to be reviewed in the future.
Standing, standing down, I am corrected, absolutely.
Just note that in the minutes.
Thank you.
Oh, please, councillor Tully.
Okay, so.
You are human.
Very human, yeah, so date of review.
Could I suggest, and I think we should do this with others, just to make it clear it can be a bit any time.
Yeah.
But the word by, in this case, 30th of June 2029.
Twenty, twenty-nine, yeah.
I think that covers it.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good.
And could I suggest one other amendment? Because the devil of this will be in the procedure, the detail in the procedure.
Correct.
Can I suggest that this be, the motion to be moved, or has been moved, be A, and that we add a B, paragraph B that reads, and I've given it to the committee clerk, that a draft procedure be tabled at the next committee meeting for consideration by councillors? I assume we're not doing the draft, the procedure today?
Just note, look, I'm happy, I'm happy with that. Sorry, wait till it comes up, is that it? Yep, I'm happy with that as the mover, with that amendment. Second, who was councillor Martin? Are you happy with the inclusion of that para, B?
Yeah, I'm happy with that.
Recommendation B. Can I just go back with respect to A? And I'm not sure whether the term first para is sufficient, whether we need to use the term, the full word paragraph, or whether. Underheading project approval, first paragraph. Sorry, that was my shorthand typing, thank you. Yes, yeah. So just the full word paragraph as opposed to para. Yes, go ahead.
Provide some feedback, so through the chair, no, with recommendation B, no concern, I guess just to, for your awareness that the procedure has already been drafted and circulated with feedback incorporated after the briefing session, just to note that I thought your intention was to start the new policy and procedure from one July, so I guess if it's going, if the procedure isn't settled, you just might want to consider what, whether you're comfortable to operate without a procedure in place?
Yeah, my view was that it might be a short switch over.
Yeah.
But just to make sure the procedure are more than, were aligned, that we're really genuinely comfortable with. But I think the policy can stand on its own for, even if it's another two or three weeks.
I'm happy with that, admittedly. It is only going to be a few weeks. We do need to, to, I guess, just finalise that procedure with some haste, but obviously until such time as we adopt it. We'll carry on as usual, but we'll continue to keep the doors of collaboration and consultation open to all parties. So the motion has been put, is there any discussion? There being no further discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote, all those in favour? Against, that's carried. Thank you councillors. Apologies for the, quite a bit of conversation, just getting that, that correct. I now go to item four, confirmation of minutes. Is there a mover in the room? Yes, oh, sorry, before I actually move that, is there any concerns or alterations, corrections or suggested amendments to those, those minutes? There being none, thank you for moving that deputy mayor, and do I have a second up? Councillor Martin again, thank you. Any discussion? No discussion, put that matter to the vote, all those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you. Item five, asset infrastructure services, the capital delivery report. It is a receiver note report, and, but is there any questions of the, any of the officers or the general manager in relation to this matter? If there's none, I do have one, we did discuss at the last round that we were a touch behind in March. Obviously, tropical cyclone Alfred did avert a lot of our attention away from our day-to-day business, and particularly in your department, Ms Mackenzie, so can I just ask if we're, if we're back on schedule?
Thank you, Chair, yes, we are largely back on schedule, there will be some minor carry-forward works, which are mostly on projects that have already started, just as not as progressed, they were always multi-year projects to be, to be completed, however, we've just, are slightly behind as we've caught up all the other projects.
Very good.
So we look, we look very close to spending the expected amount.
Thank you. Is there any further questions? No, no further questions. It is a receiver note recommendation, do I have a mover? Thank you councillor Johnick, seconded councillor Doyle. Discussion? Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chair. Councils able to do quite a bit of catch-up in April, and I was pleased to see achieved a $10.7 million spend compared to the budget of $5.5 million, and that is the highest variance achieved this financial year, and I think a great result. The forecast total expenditure by the end of the financial year stands at 96.3 million, closely aligned to the approved annual budget of 100.23 million. Given there was a cyclone in there causing delays, this would be a pleasing result if we can get there, so that's great work. All resurfacing works for this financial year are still tracking to be completed, and I note that our rubber soft fall replacement programme is well underway, and pavement rehabilitation work on Adalong Avenue is expected to commence later this month. I note the stage one design has now been concluded for the stage drainage mitigation at Champions Way, Willow Bank, and work started yesterday to capture flows collected from the existing internal bund of the Willow Bank Raceway and diverted them west of the Queensland Raceway, and that work is expected to be completed by January 2026. And Chair, if I could be indulged, may I ask Ms Mackenzie a question?
Yes, go ahead.
It's one that residents had asked, and I have asked you a week or two ago, about, I guess, the filling of potholes via cold mixes versus hot mix. I had some residents who made some comments about how council was addressing some potholes differently, and do you mind if I ask, Mr Mackenzie, explain the two different methods and why we use the two different methods of the pothole filling, is that okay? Chair, if you do, thank you.
Yeah, thank you through the chair. Yes, Mayor, we discussed how potholes are treated differently depending on the weather situation, so we actually use a cold, what we call a cold mix, when the weather is poor, so the, it might still be wet, the pothole isn't completely dry. If you use a hot mix in that case, the, it won't bind, so we use a cold mix, which is more of a temporary solution. Those, we do expect cold mixed potholes to fail in time, and we'll go back, and if the weather is right, we'll use the hot mix, which will actually bind with the pavement a lot better and be a more permanent pothole solution.
Thank you very much, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
That's good, that's different to the question I thought you were going to ask. I thought you were going to ask the difference between a hot and cold mix, and I thought it would have been obvious, but.
I already asked that question a couple of weeks ago. No, we had residents who had noticed the different methodology, and it was good to know the reasons why. Thank you, Ms Mackenzie, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, thank you. Any other discussion? Mover or the second to wish to raise anything? Well, just as, if not, then just as the Chair, I just want to commend you and your team, the whole department, for their ability to catch up after tropical cyclone Alfred, that's, it's an incredible effort, as has been highlighted by the mayor, and yeah, credit to you and the team, thank you. So the motion is, as I said, a receiver note, all those in favour? Against, against that, sorry, that is unanimous for passed. Item six, thank you, Ms Mackenzie, and I now invite Mr Davy to come forward for item six. I just note too that, you'll note that there's no new report for court action status, and I believe that it's because of the short timeframe between the last meeting and this one. However, if we have any questions of Mr Davy, we can address those in relation to that further in the agenda if need be. So you're ready, Brett? Thank you. Item six, the Ipswich adopted infrastructure charges resolution incentives for 2025. Is there any questions of the general manager or officers concerned? There being none, I note the recommendation is quite extensive there, it is as tabled. Is there, there's no amendments or anything to that, Mr Davy is there? So it is as tabled. I shall move that recommendation, if I can have a second please. Councillor Tully, thank you. If there is any discussion? Yes, Mayor Harding?
Thank you, Chair, and this is an important piece of work, especially as our city grows. Thank you, Chair, and, um, this is a, an important, uh, piece of of work, especially as our city grows. When new areas are developed into housing, um, developers do pay a fee to contribute towards roads, parks and community facilities, and and same with the, um, um, residents as that as well. Various factors go into determining that fee, but what this new Ipswich adopted infrastructure charges resolution does is allows councils to put its best foot forward by making sure the prescribed amount is the maximum adopted charge. I think that this has been well overdue, considering the ever-growing black hole in infrastructure funding that we are in. The state government set the infrastructure charges cap, which has not been appropriately indexed since it was introduced in twenty eleven. And this is placing enormous pressure on us as a council of the fastest-growing area in the state. By mending our charges to the maximum, it assists us in getting our fair share from developers, and helps protect our rate pays during a cost of living crisis. Sadly, with all of the development that we are seeing, we are still lagging behind, and a significant funding gap, um, still exists even with this increase. What these revised charges and incentive signal to the market is that we want to do something different. We want to encourage development diversity, and with our new planning scheme paving that way, uh, with appropriately owned land and the provision for medium and high density dwellings in locations close to existing public transport. I also note the council incentives package for twenty twenty five includes a new incentive, the housing diversity affordability incentives policy. What this policy, policy will do is promote the delivery of diverse housing and affordable housing, and bring forward multiple unit dwellings. Council will provide up to five million dollars in relief over four years in total for multiple pro, multiple dwelling projects, which can be delivered by June twenty twenty nine. This incentive will sit alongside the hotel and short-term accommodation incentives policy, which aims to meet Ipswich's need for tourism accommodation, and cater for major events like the Brisbane twenty thirty two Olympic and Paralympic Games. This incentive promotes the delivery of integrated hotels with a minimum of fifty rooms, and a minimum of three stories that will also include a restaurant and a conference facility to be delivered by mid twenty twenty nine. These new, um, this new charges resolution and incentive policies, I think, are great levers, and I think the councillors around this table for working with the council also, uh, for, for this lever that we can assist those who are struggling to get into the housing market, ensure that we, as a council, are doing everything we absolutely can uh, to maximise the infrastructure charges for the benefit of the community, thank you, Chair.
Did the second to wish to discuss, speak to it, councillor Tully? Did you wish to speak to, any other discussion? Um, I just want to re- reiterate what the mayor said, and this dovetails in nicely with the new city plan. But more importantly, uh, when you do institute a plan, a city plan like that, it can be seen as a hard and fast document, but we know that it is and can be flexible, but these incentives, uh, these incentive policies do provide us with an opportunity to uh, directly target the things that are needed in our community, as the mayor highlighted, uh, things particularly pertaining to, um, uh, affordable housing and the like, so, um, and looking very, um, keenly towards uh, the hotel and short-term accommodation incentive policy, uh, as a city uh, on the, um, boundary of Brisbane, I see that as a, um, a very worthwhile incentive policy, particularly with the forthcoming Olympics, but also with the number of major events that are conducted here in Ipswich each year, so. So I commend, um, the work of the, um, again, the department, uh, for putting these incentives together, and, um, my fellow councillors for working through that process to ensure we get the best, hopefully get the best outcomes out of those incentives. If there's no further discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote, all those in favour. Against, that's carried unanimous, that, uh, that is the, um, full items on the agenda. I do believe there are no notices of motion, uh, I have not been advised of any matters arising. Um, there is, I believe, to be a few questions this morning, um, and I believe councillor Augustine, you do have a matter to raise in general business.
Yes, thank you, Chair, Chair, I just want to, um, raise, um, a question on notice, uh, regarding an emerging issue, uh, with Redbank Plains Road and Greenwood Village Drive, uh, intersection, um, we've got an upgrade happening there. Uh, I note that notification has been distributed to residents, um, by the developer, and I have been receiving emails, um, just asking the question, um, about what's happening, uh, this is the first the residents have known about it, so the lack of consultation with the residents have, has been one of, um, importance. Um, and also there's commentary online, um, yes, I know you don't take that um, as a rule of thumb to follow, but, um, it seems to be growing, um. I do understand and and recognise that there's been a lot of consultation, a lot of reports around this, uh, intersection, um, and, and the re, the reports are saying that this, this intersection has failed, and it needs to happen, um, the no right turn in either way, so I do re- recognise that we are in a rock and a hard place, but um, I I think it would be remiss of me not to point out something that's just been, um.
Well, just, just to, sorry, and I don't mean to hold you up, councillor Augustine, but did, did you have a question in relation to what you're saying, because I can bring up the, um, the general manager, um, I can't see Ms Mackenzie at the moment, um, but if she's here, I, would you like to come to the leg turn while, um, councillor Augustine is, um, coming to her.
Point?
Yes, if I may.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I'm getting there, uh, um, I I I do have to ask questions only because of the fact that, um, I've had a couple of emails sent from the principal of, um, Redbank Plains State School in the last couple of weeks, where Redbank Plains, um, State School backs, or their frontage is School Road, and they've had a lot of, um, near misses on School Road. And so my question is, ha, you know, just has every option been considered, and in con, in in that, has there been considerations placed on the impact on s, um, s, the two schools, which are St Anne's and particular Redbank Plains State School, um. And if there were some recommendations around the school, uh, what were they? So that's my first.
Yes, thank you, Ms Mackenzie.
Thank you through the chair, um, so council recently engaged a independent traffic consultant to have a look at this issue, and they have just completed their draft report, I met with them yesterday, we'll be bringing back some information to a briefing. They did look at a number of options for the intersection itself, and have looked at impact on other roads, so we'll bring back some detail on that.
Okay, thank you, and I do note, um, general manager, Mr Davy, has sent an email around saying that we will discuss a little bit more and in a briefing. But I just, two more questions, I just wanted to know, uh, with the report, was there any consideration of just lowering the speed limit, I know that it's seventy in that s, intersection? Was there ever consideration of blowing, lo, lowering and leaving the intersection open?
Through the chair, there is that consideration in the report that I'll bring back next week.
Okay.
So there, yeah, that's, that's one of the options to look at, but it would probably not be in isolation.
Okay, and the last question, um, wha- what sort of, um, impact has that intersection have, like, is it just, is it just the, the amount of vehicles, or have, has there been incidents, like accidents, on that intersection potentially in the last six months?
Uh, I'd have to go back and check the report, the crashes are included in that report, the draft report, so I'll talk to that next week, I'd, I'm not I'm not sure if they were at that actual intersection, or if it's more on that length of road.
Okay, thank you, those were my, my three questions, I don't know if anyone else wants to ask.
I I was just going to, if I may, um, just ask the question, when does that, um, report get circulated and populated with the councillors?
So next week, the seventeenth, there's a council briefing, so I'll, I'll bring it there to discuss.
Okay, so we, we received that a few days beforehand, um, I believe, don't we, the?
You've just received it recently, sorry, through the chair, haven't you, Seren, and so, um, when do you anticipate being able to share that with the councillors? So at the moment, it's still in draft, I'm hoping to get it by the end of the week as a final.
Yeah, thank you.
So we will be able to circulate it in advance, a few days in advance, potentially, once, um, the general manager's satisfied with the contents.
Very good.
And sorry, and just sorry, ma, uh, just noting that in the, um, the email, uh, the, uh, correspondence sent out to residents, they're stating that works are going to start on the twenty first of this month?
This month or next month, is it?
Uh, it's this month, so if I can just, uh, clarify on that, that situation, so there's an existing development approval. Um, as part of assessment of that development application, a traffic assessment was undertaken by the developer. That traffic assessment identified that Greenwood Village Road and Redbank Plains Road intersection, um, with traffic growth, including growth from the development, would be unsafe to accommodate the right turns. And, uh, our officers assessed that application, agreed with the recommendations of that report, and the development application has been approved, subject to them adjusting the Greenwood Village Road intersection to be, uh, a right turn restriction, so left turn only. Um, appreciate that that's, uh, a major inconvenience for some residents, however, the focus of that has been on safety, at that time, we did look at, uh, whether there are other options, but essentially came to the conclusion that's the only option. The report that, uh, Ms Mackenzie has referred to uh, was commissioned to undertake a further review of the intersection to establish if there was another way of considering these issues, uh, and also to look at the future in terms of the next five, ten years, um, to factor into our planning about what we do with future works by Greenwood Village Road and Redbank Plains Road, so that'll be the focus of that conversation. That report, even though it's in draft and almost finalised, doesn't change the requirement for the developer to undertake those works. Uh, and of course, uh, their plan to proceed, that's what's been notified to the community. Appreciate that, um, some of the community may feel that they should have been consulted on the changes. However, the application was code accessible, did not require public consultation, and ultimately, this is a safety response ove- over anything else. And so, uh, many of, uh, myself and many others have driven the intersections, well, I'm sure many of you have as well, there's visibility issues there, so this ultimately is about safety, if there's an alternative solution, uh, we can discuss that next week as part of the assessment of the traffic report.
Um, thank you, Chair, if I may, um, just ask, um, Mr Davy, just to clarify, given that, um, the restriction on a right-hand turn, um, where I'm I'm now hearing is part of a development approval, a condition? Is it correct then that despite what, a report commissioned by council about that particular intersection and and changes, and say we won't be able to override that condition that we've imposed on the developer?
Uh, we could if we found that there was a difference of opinion, and, um, we could then go back and negotiate with the developer about the outcome, and they, you know, may choose to change those conditions.
Okay.
But from my, uh, review of the situation and my looking at this corridor over many years, uh, to be frank and honest, I don't see there's an alternative to this, uh, and we could, of course, discuss that with the, the fresh eyes that have looked at the report, because uh, the scope of this report was different to, uh, the scope of the reports prepared for the development as well, so we've obviously looked at the broader corridor in, uh, commissioning this report to review that intersection.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Bea, you've been biding your time there.
Chair, that's, um, no, not, Chair, um, can, can I just clarify? Um, who, who has the responsibility for the cost of this intersection, is it council, is it developer, or combined?
So the works that are being planned immediately are a developer cost. Uh, if we were to, uh, or council were to go and do further works to the intersection, that's obviously a cost to the council. Uh, if the works that we do in the future are consistent with our long-term planning for that corridor, so it's, it's a trunk road, uh, and that intersection, I believe, is a trunk intersection, so that means the infrastructure charges we collect across the city can be put into this intersection, as long as we build it to the standards specified in our planning scheme and local government infrastructure plan.
So the developer is bearing the cost for the current intersection where you might be able to turn right?
Correct, that is a developer cost.
It looks like that in the future years, there'll have to be a traffic light. Um, and who will bear the costs of that?
So that depends on, uh, the design of that, so assuming there's no other development in the corridor that can or is required to undertake those works, if council were to do the works, there will be options where we could maybe signalise the intersection as it currently sits. However, that's not consistent with ultimate planning, so that you may not be able to use infrastructure charges or infrastructure contributions to deliver that work. However, if, uh, we were to do the ultimate intersection, which requires significant works, the intersection has to be moved further south, major earthworks have to happen, and that will be part of a broader programme of works on Redbank Plains Road, at that point, we would use infrastructure contributions to deal with that work.
Thank you, Mr Davy, thank you, Chair.
Could I ask, is there, um, already a design, albeit, uh, early design for a ultimate solution for that intersection?
Um, Chair, there's a very, very early design, it's, it's, I wouldn't even say it's concept yet, but we, we do recognise there's a lot of, um, factors there that will make this intersection difficult to upgrade, and it will take some time to get to the ultimate solution.
Just so that there's an appreciation by all the councillors at that briefing, can that, um, design, uh, albeit in early concept, be, uh, also part of that presentation for us, please?
Sure.
Thank you. I think that's the one thing that we're all trying to visualise how it would, how the ultimate design would work. Um, because for some of us, where, um, as, uh, Mr Davy raised, if we were to signalise it presently in its current state, that is not how the future intersection will operate, which would mean um, sunk investment by the community, by the rate payer, uh, and us as a council, obviously, so, um, therefore, uh, it would be good to get an appreciation of what the ultimate design concept is for that site, so that we can understand the enormity of the project and make our decision accordingly. Um, is there any further questions? Discussion on that matter, so thank you for bringing that to our attention, thank you, um, Ms Mackenzie, again, thank you councillor Augustine as well, and thank you Brett for your contribution to that. Um, I did raise the fact that there is no court status report, did any, anyone wish to get, um, some advice on that? Um, on the circumstances of our court status at the moment?
Could I just suggest, and I accept that, yeah, so it's a short period between the, for the sake of completion, so that every set of minutes and agendas, even if it's a similar sort of report, even identical, that it's there, so that at any point that we go back in time, there will be a report each month, um, even if it is similar or identical to the earlier report, please.
Uh, the Chair has been very kind in terms of the delay, we did miss the, the deadlines for the report, so I must fall on my sword for that one, uh, and appreciate your commentary, councillor Tully.
It's the last time I have your back, mate. I can hear the bus now. Okay, all good, so, um, uh, in light of that, uh, but what is the current status, would you give?
Uh, in essence, it'd be the same status as last meeting, there's been no change to those matters on the, the court list at present.
And that is an accurate reflection, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, all right, all good. Um, if there's no further general business, um, I shall wrap the meeting up. Yes, sorry.
Just before you do, um, we, it's an automatic ten-minute start, um, which means we'd start at ten and then.
Uh, yes, then we'd be break again, yeah.
Yeah, I'll move that we, uh, that the next, uh, meeting, Finance and Governments Committee commence at, uh, ten past ten.
Uh, are we aware if, um, um, morning tea has arrived or not?
Well, if, as other reasons, we take a break.
I realise that, but I was going to suggest maybe even quarter past. Just for that.
I'll move it.
Thank you, uh, that is, all those in favour? Against that, we return at ten fifteen for the next meeting, thank you for your attendance, um, thank you for your patience, meeting closed.